I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we leave tonight, I should take your picture.
Again?
Again. Oh, we did already?
No, we didn't. No, we didn't.
Yeah, we did.
We didn't. No, we didn't. Melissa looks like crap.
We already talked about it. Ladies keep saying what they have to.
I'll remember this forever. I'll remember this forever.
Approve the agenda. I would like to actually add, uh, this...
The letter?
It's kinda short notice, but for the vendors for heydays.
Okay.
While possibly waiving the fee, you're adding that to our city code.
New business?
Yes.
Vendors?
Vendors for... Global food vendors for heydays.
New business for?
With that, approval of the agenda.
I'll move with the addition.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Okay, excuse me. So you have the minutes for May 24th, you have the, uh, accounts receivable, the three year comparison for the golf course, cash balance reports as of Friday, and then the payments. I do wanna point out a couple payments real quickly. Um, we do have...I'm trying to find Andrea's notes here. Uh, you'll see a couple invoices to the League of Minnesota Cities. One is for liquor license, and then we also, uh, had our workers' comp insurance audited, so we had to pay a little more on that. And then I do wanna point out, if you look at the waste management, uh, the, the cost for the spring cleanup this year was fifty-three hundred dollars.
Saw that.
And we had budgeted eight. So I'm gonna ask the council, as we look at our budgets here in the next few months, if we wanna, if we maybe wanna budget for that every year, if it's gonna be...
That much less.
That much less. So we can talk about that in the upcoming months.
About a third of what it was last, last time we did that.
Yeah.
And that's just based on time.
Yep. Yep. So that's all I have for...
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public forum. Is there anybody here to speak through public forum?
Kathy.
My name is Kathy King. My address is seven zero four West Second Street here in Janesville, and I just have a concern that I'd like to bring before the council and before the, I guess, the city. When I was a kid, we were not allowed to burn in the city limits. On, only on special days could we have fires. Now, I, as a person with asthma and as a person with reactive lung disease, it just really is sad to me that any day of the week, when it's a beautiful day outside and I wanna open my windows and get some fresh air, nine times out of ten, all of our neighbors have burn pits, and the smoke is so thick that I have to keep my window shut, or my asthma or my reactive lung disease kicks in and I wind up at the emergency room. I know I am not the only resident that is concerned with a house that's filled with smoke every time we open our windows. I think it's great that people wanna be in their yards and have burn pits, and if there was a way they could contain the smoke to their own yards, have at it. But for those of us people who, my mom lived with us from, from last October until recently, and, um, with her COPD, the window was open one time and she wound up in, in the hospital from the smoke being in the house. And so I don't know what the answer is. Is it possible that, that, that there could be an ordinance that says, "Okay, everybody, this is your day to have a fire in the fire pit," you know, a Friday or a Saturday, but the rest of the week could we, could we have a time when people with breathing concerns would have a time when, you know what, it's beautiful outside, I can open my windows and go to bed and know that I'm not gonna wake up choking? So, that, that's what I brought tonight. That's what I've been thinking of, and I've talked to a lot of people about this, and a lot of people have said, "You know, I'd be all for that." Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else here to speak through public forum?
I'm Tony Broback, Jim. Um, we probably should've been here last week, but we had some issues come up. We sent a letter in about having our camper parked in our front yard, and I moved it back into town. I'm in Mom's house at one oh eight West Third Street, and all our life, the front access actually has a driveway access, and when the city redid the roads, we still have driveway access. And the reason we want to park the camper there is because if we parked in the driveway, it will overhang the sidewalk and people will have to duck because we have a fifth wheel. So, and the reason we try not to fill our driveway up is we have four vehicles there, and so we know that, we thought it would be better to have it in our yard because during the winter, if we got four cars on the road, then your snowplow has to go by all the time. So we were trying to make it easy access that way. And we moved out of our house into her house, so we still kinda have a little bit of our belongings and live kinda halfway in it. So, we grew up, we always had our camper in the front yard. Uh, I've lived, like, my parents have lived there forever. So, we always had that. We have the driveway access. I guess we just, I've asked the neighbors, none of the neighbors really seem to have a problem with it. We've gone down the roads. We have neighbors that park trailers in front of the stop signs that you can't see the stop signs, but I'm not one to call and complain about everything else. So, we'd just like to be able to park our camper in. It's, gets kind of expensive to have to store it and then have to drive twenty minutes to a half an hour to go get my camper, to bring it home, to pack it, to go somewhere. So it's just convenience on our part. Do you have anything more to say?
You pretty much hit it on the head.
I can say a lot more, but that's just kinda the general consensus of why we'd like to be able to park our camper where we've been parked at.
I mean, I'm the one that wrote the letter, and like I said, we had stuff coming, I didn't make it. You're gonna speak, you have to speak into the microphone.
Yeah, we're gonna...
My name is Rick Rosebauer. Yes, ma'am. Um, I'm the one that wrote the letter, and it was, like she brought up, we did drive around and there's other areas that we seen that probably the yards looked a lot worse than what it did with my camper sitting there. And it felt like, in a way, that we were being, I guess, targeted, because it wasn't the first time, and I've seen some stuff in town that, I mean, looked much worse than that, and it didn't seem nothing was being reacted to that. So, and the other reason we showed up was part of that is we didn't make it just if I needed to do something different to address it, to bring it back up to you guys, so... But I didn't know if I need to write something again, or...
Well, you weren't being targeted. Uh, it's based on complaints. That's how we enforce our nuisance, it's complaint-based. So we had some complaints about the camper.
Okay.
Now, last week, we did have it on the agenda, and we were gonna have a discussion about it. However, it's not this week.
Yep.
Um, we'll talk about possibly revisiting it.
I mean, if I need to write a new letter and then make sure the next meeting or whatever, I'll do what I need to do. That's one of the reasons we stopped up tonight, so we got it, so we get it taken care of.
Well, we'll discuss it, somebody'll get ahold of you if they want something else.
Definitely pay attention to the upcoming agendas, because it'll be on there and it'd be a nice day to have maybe some input.
All right. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and, I mean, I could've drove around town and turned a bunch of people in. I'm not that type of person. It's not, it's not who I am, so...
Right.
But thank you.
Thank you. Public forum, Ron.
Ron Berger, one one five West North Street. At the last meeting, the council discussed as far as the, uh, disc golf out to the, out to the park north of town here, which is, sounds like a good idea for the, for the city and the people around. And, uh, I see by the minutes, there was talk about how they would come up with the money for that. And, uh, you know, as far as budgeting for next year or whatever, and I'm thinking, you know, for the last twenty plus, twenty-plus years, the citizen, the taxpayers of Janesville have been supporting that golf course, and now I've been hearing every meeting how great the golf course is, how great the golf course is doing. I think that money that we've been giving to the golf course has been going from the taxpayers anyhow. Let's take some of that money from the golf course and use it for the disc course and let everybody enjoy it instead of just a few, okay? Thank you.
Public forum? Public forum? Okay, moving on. Notice and communications.
I do not have any.
Council reports. Andy, I know there was a golf course meeting.
Yep. We met on, uh, on night. We had all numbers there except for one. Uh, we went over the, how everything's going out there, and still going good. We're off about forty thousand from last year at this time. Um, DAC project's done. Came in, uh, I'd say roughly two thousand dollars over budget, but, uh, things need to be done, so I think when you take on projects like that, I think that's not, not the end of the world.
Is that included donation we got for that?
Okay. Do you want me to actually...
Yeah, I should've brought that one.
Oh, here, you can just read my red letters. It's right there.
Um, we talked about, uh, they have some new tournaments out here for month of June. Sounds like a couple new tournaments in month of August. And JAG is gonna look into doing some of their...JAG is gonna look into, um...
Ron?
Looking at, um, some projects for the next coming years, because we, we brought up the, the five-year, the five-year plan, and they said, "Well, we just, we just got done with this DAC, let it meet, and kinda get some more stuff put together." I know that, uh, the car corral is still, um, on the hit list, and probably next year maybe.
Any news on the food trucks? That they were thinking about doing food trucks more often this year?
Uh, I did not...
Well, they do.
Okay.
There, there will be some.
There will be?
Well, there, I know we have some lined up, but I don't know about...
They wanted to do it like a lot more this year, right? That'd be good.
I know there will be one out there for the, the JAG, we called them in.
Perfect.
An additional one, but, uh, our next meeting will be sometime in August. We have not set a date yet.
Okay.
We wanna meet once before we put into budget, so we'll set the budget next year.
Great.
Mike, anything down at Spring Creek, or hasn't been?
We haven't done a meeting yet, but we got a meeting next Monday for that, so...
Okay. Do you have anything?
Park Road tomorrow night.
Okay.
Or Thursday, yeah.
Not nothing yet.
Okay.
So...
We'll move on then. Administrative reports.
All right, on the screen, um, attached in your package is the reconciliation statement from the bank for May. You also have the cash balance report. Uh, the first half, property taxes came in from the county. We photocopied the check for you. Um, we get the second half in December every year, or November or so. And I just wanna point out that this year's first half taxes looks like it's a lot, and the reason it is a lot is because of foreclosed lots that had recently been purchased, those assessments were paid, paid off in full for the most part. So you're gonna, you're gonna see a big number in the, in the first half tax statement.
Which item money does that, those go under, and where does that extra money, no, goes towards the bond, but which...
They will go towards the bond. Yep.
Should take care of that bond.
Yep. Um, the league next, actually, next week, the league has their annual conference, and I will be attending it. It's virtual, so I don't have to travel anywhere, and it was really cheap this year because of that, so I'll be, I'll be attending the conference. Um, and a question for you, normally about this time of year, the city council will do my performance review. Um, would you like to do that at the end of June? You wanna do it sometime in July? I, I do know, and I, no offense to three of the new ones here, but I know there's been a couple years where if we had newer council members, we waited a little while, so you kinda could form an opinion about me before we did my review.
I formed that before I was...
I was gonna say, but I think I know you.
You did twenty years ago. I knew that was gonna bite me.
Smile and nod, boys. Smile and nod.
So what do you wanna, you wanna do at the end of June? And actually, that goes into my next question, are, are we gonna have a quorum at the end of June?
Let's keep it normal.
You're gone, right? I'm gone, yes.
Are you gone?
No.
Oh, okay.
'Cause wait, what would that be?
June twenty eighth.
Eight.
No, I'm here. Yep.
But you won't be, so should we just do it in July?
Let's wait till the next one, so that we're all here.
We have to make sure all of us can have a say, okay?
Andy had a whole list, I hate for him.
I am.
That's why I'm sitting by him.
He was showing us earlier. It's pretty bum.
Yeah.
It's bad.
Do the first week in July, the twelfth?
July twelfth?
Yep.
Perfect.
And yes, Mayor Arnold, you can get rid of all those ideas you have about me and start fresh tonight.
Okay. You got them left then.
Left then? Um, that is all I have. The Coalition of Minnesota Cities has their weekly, uh, notice in there for you. Watching the news again tonight, who knows what's gonna happen with the legislature in the session.
So annoying.
We don't know.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the administrative report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, we don't have any department heads here, do we? No?
None.
All right. Old business. We're gonna start with the disc golf. Kim, you...
Um, I've been researching it more and more all the time. Uh, I am at the point now that I know what, what it would cost. It was, uh, the, the baskets will be about four hundred dollars a piece. Uh, we need some cement to anchor them in the ground. I made the tee markers out of old barn wood, and, uh, I'm planning on using those as portable, uh, temporary tee markers, uh, at some point in time in the future when we decide exactly what our placement of the tees will be. Uh, Andy and I have talked about putting in hog slats, but we don't wanna do that right away. I wanna see, well, how it's received, get some response, decide where and exactly how we wanna arrange it. What I'm asking the council to do tonight is to authorize me to start construction if I can find the money. And I would make that motion myself, that, that we would authorize the committee to start construction of the disc golf course when and if I can find the money to do it.
You're looking at finding private funding?
Uh, I have a, a, a line on an organization that might back us.
Okay.
So, I would probably look at starting building in late June, early July, maybe have it running by, uh, uh, end of the summer. That's my plan. Won't take much once I get going, but I'm looking for the council to approve the construction. And then maybe the city can do any permitting or whatever we would need to do out there.
So you're talking no city funds to get this started?
No city funds.
Correct.
No, no public funds asked at this point.
I will second your motion at that point.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work and whoever's...
Clarification, I wasn't, not in favor of not having city funds, I'm just saying, I don't think it's in the budget for this year.
No, I know.
It isn't in the budget for this year.
And I talked, they wanna move on.
Just wanted to...
I talked to everybody involved, and Joe doesn't have any money, we don't have any money in special funds, so, uh, I need to go outside of the venue of the city council and the venue of the finances of the city, and I believe I've done that, so... If I can procure that, then I'll start construction. And that's what the basket looks like.
Yeah.
Uh, he gave me, or he sent that out. Uh, I believe that, uh, it's going to be a little nicer than that. The one I'm looking at is a thirty to forty chain, uh, uh, ring, three rows deep, stainless steel, the rest will be, all be galvanized, and it'd be like a one and a half or two-inch pipe that embeds in the ground. So, and my son, my grandson and I, well, went over the course, he says, "That one should be there." And that one's, so, I got, I got an advisor already on my team.
Perfect. I'm excited.
Moving forward.
Thanks for doing that, Jim.
You're welcome.
And you would rather move forward with it now, um, procuring your own funds rather than waiting to go for next year's budget?
Uh, I am very much in, in, uh, in, uh, I'm very confident that I'll be able to start construction before the first of August.
Very good. American Rescue Plan?
Yes. Uh, before I begin, I want to thank Sarah is here, and I also wanna thank Marley. Last Friday, I sat in a webinar thing on this American Recovery Act, and Sarah was kind enough to put the packet together, as Andrea and I were both busy doing stuff on the phone, and then Marley was putting this resolution together, actually, as I was listening to the webinar. So thanks to those two for helping with the packet so much this past week. Um, attached is a resolution, which, it's my understanding, we need to adopt in order for me to fill out the paperwork to apply for the federal funding for the American Rescue Plan. Once I fill that out, then we officially find out how much money we will receive, and then when we find that dollar amount out, then the city council passes another resolution accepting the money. So if you could pretty please adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirteen, which authorizes staff to seek the funding.
I would move that.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sarah.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to new business. Veterans Memorial Park Amphitheater. I believe Sarah's gonna speak with us on that.
Sarah. Okay, you want me to drop, hold up the others?
Yeah. I'm Sarah Brighten.
Are you?
Can you move the microphone into your sweet area?
So, back in twenty-ten, when we had a park board, we talked about, um, constructing an amphitheater or a shelter of some sort in the park. That was a little bit bigger to accommodate more people. Um, HEHA Committee donated quite a bit of money since then, and they would love to see an amphitheater structure be completed, um, soon.
Yeah.
So, I want to ask you guys tonight, um, this is where we started, in that south west corner where the shelter would, amphitheater, this is old now, remember that, so I'm just doing this drawing so you guys can kinda see. Is there a different place where you guys would like to see this amphitheater constructed at?
In the park.
In the park, yeah.
Obviously, we know that area does get wet.
Yep, and it's gonna cost a lot more...
I spent quite a bit of time looking over the park, but, I mean, that's the best spot for it.
But I'm gonna guess that if they, if they built it, though, it's gonna be cemented, correct?
It's gonna be raised up a little.
And raised up.
It's gonna have some elevation.
So water's not gonna be necessarily the issue that I'm worried about personally.
It seems like the most logical place to put it.
Agreed.
Do you like it?
I'm gonna guess you guys have spent some time on looking at location. Am I wrong?
Well, it's been eleven years, yep.
Yeah. Yeah, I know you guys have been really working hard on this. I mean, it shows.
Okay, perfect. So you guys are all agreeing that's a good location?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I am included in there, uh, quote from this poly company that will, as you can see, get, will get the material from them for the structure.
Perfect.
Um, the drawing, it looks like there's pavers in the front, like Andy had said earlier, which...
Just a minute.
I, yeah. Don't believe we'll be doing pavers, we'll just cement for now.
Perfect.
We're hoping to add on as we go and as more funds get donated.
I'm so excited for this.
You and me and everybody, yeah, yeah.
You can do stamped concrete at not a lot of extra cost.
What did you call it?
Stamped.
Stamped? Oh, is that where they make it look like it's the pavers?
Yeah. If you need to stay, if you need the stamps, I can borrow them to the city.
Do you guys, I do have one quote for an installer.
For the concrete?
No, just the project.
Yep.
That does not include any site work, any prep work, nothing, so I'd need it to line myself, to line somebody up. Do you guys have a builder in mind that you would like me to reach out to? I do have one that hasn't picked out the plans yet.
Obviously, if, if there's a local contractor interested, that's the way I would lead.
Yeah.
Sure.
Definitely.
There are probably several contractors involved. You'll probably have to look at a mason.
Yep.
Again, if somebody local is interested.
I'm hoping I can find a contractor that will...
Line it all up?
Take the project and go.
I'm wondering, too...
What are you doing all weekend?
Because you have a lot of donations from HEHA, Janesville area, Simply Save.
Uh-huh.
But I don't think a lot of people in the city are aware of just how long you've been working on this and how hard you've been working on. I don't even think a lot of people are aware that this was even in the works. You think that maybe if we put the bug out, that we might get some more donations to help towards that cost, too?
We sure could, yep.
And like, we could do kinda like, um, I think it was Waldorf when they did their, um, Fireman's Hall, when they were able to get a lot of donations, each one of them had like a paver with their name and something like that on there.
Sure.
It's just kind of a staple for the, forever, you know?
Donor's name, yeah.
Something like that. I just think it'd be cool to incorporate as much as possible. We've grown a lot since you started, and we could do more.
Perfect.
Up to you.
Okay.
It's your baby.
I have a person in mind that might give us some free... There you go. I got a thumbs up. We might get a free plug in the paper. Thank you, Mikey.
Okay, perfect. Um, so you're okay with the location?
Mm-hmm.
So the quote that I have included is good for thirty days.
Okay.
Um, turnaround time is twelve weeks, just so you're aware. So, whether it gets done this year, I don't know. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's so exciting.
Yeah. So, you can see of our funds, we do have...
Cement?
No, probably not.
I don't think so.
What were you about to say?
But there is other ways to...
Yeah.
Do you guys like the design?
I do.
I did talk to the HEHA, uh, gal on the HEHA Committee, and she was really happy with the design, so...
Well, it'd be nice, too, because it seems like it's got that background and the awning, so they can put their sound system up, not gonna damage equipment.
Um, in the bottom of the four posts, there's gonna be electrical...
Electric. Perfect.
Outlets in that, so we can...
I think it's a nice design. I think it'll be easy to add on to if we wanna do more to it in the future.
Yep.
So, um, I guess if you want me to continue to wait on this, instead of accepting the quote, that's up to you guys. I do have funds to accept it.
I would make a motion for Sarah to accept it.
Yep.
And move, move on.
I will second that motion.
I have a question on that for you. This is just for the material, correct?
This is for the material, though.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify a question on that. So if we end up not finding somebody to put it up for us today or this year.
Yes, the materials is 12 weeks out, so.
We're looking.
We're looking at probably the spring anyways.
Next spring.
Possibly this fall, but depending on contractors.
That's what I was, okay. So I was, my question was getting around to eventually.
Yeah, I.
But I think with, at 11 years, we've waited long enough, let's start moving.
Okay, so then if we, funds, I mean, if they can get to it at the end of the year, I'm most likely going to run out of funds.
Which hopefully, if we can seek more donations, I think that might help cover the cost of like, or start to.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay.
Got Ron's idea for the golf, for the golf too, if, or creative fund.
We do have a fund created.
We'll, we'll come up.
Okay. We do have a fund created for this project.
Long enough.
Yeah, I have it on the screen right there.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Exactly right.
This will be so nice.
Sorry, you have a motion second on the floor, I'm sorry.
I have a motion second, yep.
All in favor? To accept the quote, right? That was the motion.
To, to accept the quote and order the package.
And have her order the materials.
Yep, get it ordered.
Get it here.
Yep.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
You guys need anything else from me? Good? You should have everything? Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next, we're looking at granting extension for live music, just for heydays weekend, extending it from 12 to 12:30.
I don't, I don't have an objection to this, so.
Yeah, so ours, ordinance states, like Andy said, it's a newer ordinance, maybe, what, eight, nine years old? But anyway, music stops at midnight, but this resolution extends that to 12:30 a.m. for heydays. The tent, the music tent at heydays, not my neighbor's backyard.
So it would just be this year? It's the first year since COVID. I, just do it.
I would move resolution, accepting the change.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have some liquor licenses to renew.
So every year at this time, we update, or not update, we approve all of the liquor licenses within the city? Okay, and all, okay, thank you, Sarah. All, all but one have paid right now. What we normally do is we send out letters talking about the renewals and the liquor license holders and they pay the fee and they, they prove their insurance to us. That's part of the regulations. And then once we get all of that material, we send it to the state and the state approves everything. Liquor licenses in Janesville begin July 1 and they run for 12 months. Okay?
Make a motion to approve liquor licenses for the city of Janesville pending payment and any background or paperwork that needs to be turned into the city.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Number four is the heydays vendors. I believe, did everybody get that letter?
No.
Just me?
No.
So basically, our, our newly done city code from last November, put a new chapter in their, in the city code about the mobile food vendors. And if there is a mobile food vendor in town, they need to be permitted.